I first, I did want to bring up or to pinpoint this sweetness that Uchiyama speaks of. You know, this sweet persimmon tree that takes 100 years to ripen and then gets grafted onto an astringent tree. And then the sweetening process continues. And I thought, that is so apt. That is so apt. And you take, you know, 100, 100 years, a lifetime, right? A person's lifetime. And I shared with those of you who did the precepts class, this quote. Now unfortunately, I don't have the name of the teacher, but he's a Tibetan teacher. And he said, "People try spiritually to achieve realization. The true realization is to achieve a kind heart. Other than that, there is nothing useful. Nothing else." And I was having a conversation with someone who was asking about liberation. It was asking about, and why I specifically don't speak of enlightenment. And you know, there is in Zen, a hesitancy to speak about enlightenment, because it's not a goal that we should direct ourselves toward or pursue in the sense of, now I'm here and then here's the goal, right? And I've spoken about this before, how and especially in Soto Zen, you're sitting as Buddha, you're not sitting to become a Buddha. And I was thinking of this ripening and how Uchiyama speaks a little bit later on about vowing to realize the self so that it can be fully itself. And that it may not be the work of a single lifetime. I remember years ago, I was at the Met and I saw this exhibit of these Dutch tapestries. And there were these families and that tapestries were huge. I mean, you know, one tapestry was an entire wall. And they took sometimes hundreds of years to finish. And so you would have a family where, and I believe it was the man usually, you know, the father would start or the grandfather would start, knowing that he wouldn't see the finished product. And then in one sense, that's what practice is like. You know, even when you do start to see, you witness the transformation in your life, because you get these little glimpses that you, we never really fully see its effects. Right? Because we're the worst possible judges of how that practice is working or not working. And that that's a good thing. Because what we can see and measure and imagine is so tiny, is so limited. But I think this, this also, this sense, you know, this understanding that it's going to take a while, is also really important. I used to be so impatient in my twenties. I just wanted to get there. It was like, I just wanted to be done. And of course, you know, the older I get and the more I practice, the more I realize, I'm just beginning. And then I reach a point and I'm just beginning again. And I just see once again, it's because they said, how much I don't know. You know, Uchiyama saying, well, after 40 years now, he's just beginning to understand. And I think, yes, exactly. And so, so I think as practitioners, you know, to understand both the the kind of the scope and the depth of this thing that we're vowing to do and the time that it's going to take and to not be daunted by that and to realize, well, I mean, what else am I going to do with my life anyway? I mean, what a wonderful way to spend, to spend my life, trying to plumb the depths of what is depthless ultimately. And, and it was interesting to me that this, you know, this grafting of the persimmon, Uchiyama likens it right to the transmission of Zen from India to China to Japan and then to the West. And if you remember that famous koan, a monastic asks, "Jiaozhou, why did Bodhidharma come to the West?" And Jiaozhou says, "A cypress tree in the garden." That's the transmission from east to west. A tree, not a persimmon tree, in this case, a cypress tree. Well, he could have said persimmon, he could have said pine, he could have said oak. And Uchiyama saying, "This is the true way of life for humanity." And I do here, just want to acknowledge, just take a moment to acknowledge, Uchiyama, I mean, he's a little arrogant. You know, he does say things now then that are just like, ooh. And I also, so I do want to say that, I want to acknowledge, yes, I noticed that. And I think it's also the conviction of somebody who knows what he wants, what he's looking for and what he's willing to devote his life to. And that I very much appreciate and admire, because I feel that's how I've approached my life as well. But you know, sometimes the way that he uses language makes it sound as a Buddhismist. Did you have this, this, this expression here, "The last coke in the desert"? No? I guess it's a Mexican thing.
What, is that American?
Well, clearly not. I think it's Mexican. Yeah, the last, it's the last coke in the desert. You know, it's the end all, it's, it's the thing, it's the pinnacle. And it isn't. Buddhism is a very wise, I would say, a very wise path. But it's not the only path. And it certainly doesn't hold a copyright on truth. And I think it's really important to remember that, because there are many writings. I mean, Dogen himself would do it, my own teacher would do it. You know, he would just, you know, look down at every, at all these other sanghas, because we were the ones really doing it. And you know, I mean, that's just arrogant. Let's just say it. That is just arrogant. And so, you know, I practice Buddhism, because it seems so sensible to me. Because it seems, from what I can see, to describe so accurately the way things actually are. But I would never dream of telling somebody else that it's the only way, or it's the best way even. I would not say that. God damn it.
Did you say, "God damn it"?
Sometimes I just have technical difficulties. Today was one of those days. And now he says, "When we talk about some ideal truth or the way something should be in its ideal state, we can't help but feel a contradiction between that and the reality of what we are. My departure point was to move to the very edge of this contradiction and from there to discover a truth or absolute reality that no one could deny. I was convinced that it was by truth or in truth that I wanted to live out my life." And I'm just tying this, what I just, to what I just said before. Right? Because it is, he is talking about absolute reality. And there is such a thing, and it is not Buddhist. I just want us to be very clear about that. Is that clear? The distinction that I'm making?
You're saying it's not Buddhist? I'm taking it too literal. What do you, what do you mean? It's just, just reality?
Right.
It doesn't have a name, Buddhism?
Right.
Okay.
If, if the Buddha had never lived and he had not taught what he taught, this absolute ground of being, this things as they are would still be true. And maybe nobody would know about it. But it's not Buddhist. It's just a man, as he says, you know, the sweet persimmon tree happened after a lot of work to see this truth. And then him and a whole bunch of other people codified it and said, "Here it is." But I'm making the distinction, because I've also, you know, I've been reading these 14 mindfulness trainings, Thich Nhat Hanh, that are somewhat parallel to the precepts. And the first three are about this, are about views. Thich Nhat Hanh saying, directing those of us who practice to keep an open mind to all views, to not become fanatical, you know, to, to... Now, the first one is openness of mind. And the second one is non-attachment from views. And the third one is freedom of thought. Right? So, so his insistence, and that is how very much how he taught and how he lived his life. This, not even ecumenical, but, but a sort of ecumenical approach to Buddhism. They're saying, there, there is no better path. There is no Hinayana, Mahayana, you know, Ekayana, one, one vehicle. I mean, it is, it is Ekayana. It is one vehicle. It's one Buddhism. Because to this day, and still, you know, even in this group that I'm participating, there are these subtle, we're not so, I think we're not, well, in some circles, it is quite overt. But you still hear it, these, these put downs of certain practices or certain viewpoints or certain beliefs, which to me go completely counter to the spirit of Buddhism and certainly of liberation. So I really want to stress that. And at the same time, I hear him say, Uchiyama, I hear him say that there, he was looking for a truth that has no contradiction, right? That encompasses the whole thing. Doesn't leave anything out, encompasses all of reality. That truth that we can rely on in the middle of what seems so unreliable in our world. And then he speaks of those accidental and undeniable realities, right? And saying, well, we're here, that's accidental. The fact that I decided to have, you know, my pineapple juice, it's accidental. But the fact that I'm going to die, that is unavoidable, undeniable. And then he goes into the three or four seals. And we've talked about these, right? The three seals, the three marks of existence. Impermanence, unsatisfactoriness, right? That everything is suffering and no self. And then the fourth here, what he's describing as nirvana, thusness, the truth of things as they are. And that that is also undeniable. So everything that lives dies. Everything that is changes. Everything that is has no independent is-ness. And still, it is as it is. And so my question to you is, if that's true, if it really is that simple, your breath is your breath, a cypress tree is a cypress tree. Each thing is as it is. What gets in the way of my seeing this? Why do we have to spend 20, 30, 40 years just seeing this very simple thing? That's not hypothetical question. Why?
Oh, isn't it the stories and the labels and the categories that we seem to have been told how to navigate this society through? I mean, if we, if we to forget all labels, all stories, I think Jesus talks about that when he says, "As you know yourself," meaning to me, "forget all the stories, you will become as I am." I mean, you know, we're so caught, when I look at you, you know, when I first look at you, you know, woman, teacher, you know, all these things that I'm taught to describe somebody by, do I really need all that? That's what I'm thinking you're saying, but that's just, you know.
Yeah, okay. Jitsuko?
Um, I, I need to get a copy of this. It's hard, it's hard for me to refer back to the page numbers. But the big image that I had coming out of this chapter was of when he speaks about all time and space happening right now. And how, like, you're on a train and so, like, the train is going. And then, at some point, it's like, the train drops away. And then you kind of realize that you haven't been moving at all. It's just the sides of the train that have been moving. And, um, I don't know, um, I don't know. Like, all that relativism is, is, you know, like, we're sitting in the train and we're thinking that we're in the train and the train is moving. And, um, but then like, I think when you encounter that absolute, it's, it's like you realize you haven't been going anywhere. And it seems, it seems like all those first three truths that you talked about fall away when you hit that fourth truth. It's like those first three truths are just, they don't, after you hit that fourth truth and the train falls away and you realize you're not ever going anywhere, that those truths don't matter anymore, in a way. Um, that was just the first half of the chapter.
Yes, exactly, exactly, Jitsuko. And now the trick is to live that moment to moment, to live that as you're having your cup of tea, to live that as your daughter arguing with you.
But why? I mean, why can't I just be?
Moment is liberation. It's like, I mean... So when Thich Nhat Hanh speaks of, because you know, I've been immersed, a little bit immersed in his teachings now, I realized, you know, what we've done with mindfulness is not what he was doing. It's not what the Buddha was doing. You know, Thich Nhat Hanh taught it as liberation. If you truly are fully mindful in this moment, as he, that famous book, I mean, the book that really popularized mindfulness, The Miracle of Mindfulness. If you're fully in that moment, and as you said, those three seals fall away, that's a moment of liberation. And Thich Nhat Hanh was saying, you can live your life like that. You can live your life like that as you're walking, as you're sitting in front of someone and you're listening to them. And you say, you know, darling, I am here for you. And you actually mean it. And you are there fully for them. That's why. Why do all of this? Because that is actually liberation.
So, so is that in accord with being intimate with the moment, not being afraid of it?
Yes. Well, fear wouldn't even have room to arise.
There we go. Okay. So yeah, I was thinking about what you were saying about Thich Nhat Hanh and what Jitsuku was, Jitsuku was saying. And I'm sorry, my screen got off. So I got a little distracted. All right, even more distracted. We're okay. So, um, Thich Nhat Hanh's approach to mindfulness, it was like, it kind of bypasses the small self in a way. It's like, you're focusing on everything you do with great care and you're just showing up for everyone. And you're not trying to let go of names and ideas and concepts. Because even when we do that, it's kind of a name and idea and concept that's trying to let go of itself. But like, when you're immersed there for someone, it, it's both a skillful means and probably what Uchiyama was talking about, about kind of living jico, living, living the true self, especially if we're unaware that we're actually doing that. And...
Yeah, I think I would say even, even more than, than bypassing it, 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 it absorbs it, it subsumes it, because it's there. The little self is, is there in one's, ready to be, to be invoked at the slightest provocation. But it doesn't matter. It's not an obstacle anymore. That is the difference between sitting, following the breath or even being the breath and the breath breathing itself. And I've said many times, it's not magic. You know, norm doesn't disappear in a puff of smoke. And, and, and there's some kind of esoteric thing happening. You're still there. And you're not. And then there's just breath. And now it's me talking about it after the fact. But when you're in that, you know that. That is when, you know, later on, he says, "Past, present and future are really only come to now." This is so, we talk about this all the time in Zen. But this is what this means. You know, if you get rid of all the esoteric stuff, is that when you're having that cup of tea, it is a miracle, because there is nothing else in the universe but that. Yes, Nina?
I guess for me, I'm reading this, especially where he talks about the the only difference between existentialism and Zen is that existentialism is the thinking about, but Zen is the, the life of the existentialist. And it just struck me as, wow, you know, I, I always felt on some level that existentialism and Buddhism were very, very close. But I thought of all these French intellectuals sitting around, you know, South, and talking about being and non-being and, you know, being in nothingness, trying to read that. And it's like Keith said, we have, you know, we have all these concepts and we have to categorize. And so, this...
Why? Why do we have to categorize?
Well, I mean, sociologists, if you look, if, you know, you read the sociology, we have to, just like animals seeing, going on to, you know, into an open field, have to be able to know the tiger from, you know, the sheep. We have to categorize things. We go into Target or whatever. And we know that the people in red are the people that we hand our money over to. I mean, there are two sociologists who write about this. We, we are categor, we are categorizing all the time for our survival for consumption in the world. We cannot not do that. That's why implicit bias is so difficult, you know, because we, we are conditioned to categorize. The question for me is, if you get away from all of those words and concepts, you still don't get away from the categorizing.
In a moment, you do. You do.
Well...
And there's a different kind of knowing. You, you know who you give your money to in Target, whether they're wearing red or not. I'm being a little facetious, but there's, there's, there's a, there's a kind of awareness that goes beyond categorization. Now, could you use it to...
Yeah, but I feel that. I've felt that. I've been in those moments, you know, every day you have, or, well, not every day, but... But the fact that we're talking about those moments being different from the moment of categorization means that we are making a distinction.
But it's not different, right? Ultimately, it's not different. It's not the same and it's not different.
It's, but, yeah. I guess when he also talks about, when Uchiyama talks about, where is it? It's something I don't under, I, I, he talks about the individual, you know, this distinction between the individual self and the universal self. I understand how those can both be simultaneous and not contradictory. And yet, part of me, Nina, can only understand those moments when you're living your life, the reality of your life, rather than thinking about it.
Right.
That I experience it as a loss, not as a loss of self, but as emerging with everything. I mean, I'll give you a very strange example. An electrician came the other day to the house and he happened to say something that opened up a huge, like, sort of intimacy, an experience, a trauma that he had. And I spent the next hour talking with him, completely forgot. We both completely forgot, like, who we were, where we were, what was to be done. And he left without having done the work. And I now know, like, the most... And there was this moment where he ceased to be the electrician and I ceased to be Nina. And it was just incredible. It was, and and I really had this moment of, wow, when people are fully present. And it wasn't darling, I'm here for you. But I was, and he was there for me too, you know, as we were. But at that moment, is that an individual? Is that me being fully who I am? Or is that me and the electrician becoming one with the universe? I don't know.
Does it matter? In the aftermath of what happened, does it matter knowing what it was? Do you need to categorize it?
No, I think you, but Uchiyama does categorize it. People and relationships, he, he, he just, he makes a distinction between the external.
I think, well, you know, all teachers transgress, right? In this, that in the sense that, like, I love that koan, you know, he knows and he knowingly offends. Because you, you have to talk about it somehow so that we can wrap our heads around what is happening when a moment like that happens, you know, in a, in a moment of dropping away in zazen or in a, in an unexpected, quote unquote, ordinary moment in your life, like you experienced. And so, why is it important to understand it to some extent? So that it doesn't become, so it doesn't get relegated to just, oh, that accident that happened and it was nice and powerful, but it never happens again. I mean, we're actually training on how to, how to disappear, which is not a great word, but, but you know what I mean? How to, how to get out of the way so that the self can fully be itself, which is what he said and what you just said. And so we talk about it and we kind of mess it up in doing so. And so we just have to remember that whatever we're saying is not the thing itself.
But I love that you said that you have, that, and I'm very relatively new to Zen, that it's hard to talk about nirvana, but liberation is the word that you, is that your choice to use the word liberation?
My personal choice. I mean, obviously, there's, there's many ways in which the word is, is used. But I tend to use liberation, yes, as opposed to enlightenment.
Oh, I thought you were saying that other Zen practitioners would...
I'm not sure what other people do. But I, but I know that for me, it is a conscious choice. Because if, if exactly that, then in a moment, you can become self-liberated, as I, as I often say. And, and so it's, it's not a, some mystical goal that is going to happen at some point. I'm going to cross a threshold and then I will never be deluded again. It's moment to moment to moment. In my limited understanding, that's how I see it. And so I prefer to use the word liberation. I mean, enlightenment is nice just in terms of, you know, shedding light and what is obscure, what is hidden but was always there. But, you know, and it gives me the hibbysheebys when somebody says to me that they think I'm enlightened. I mean, just, let's just really not go there. So I would just rather speak of liberation.
I think the liberation is profoundly different, that word. It's like humiliating, it's renouncing something, letting go. Whereas enlightenment is like attaining. I, I mean, I, I really love that you use the word self-liberate, because I, that's closer for me to the experience.
Can I, can I ask a question then?
Yeah.
So are you, as we say, saying that this, this powerful experience is so transformative that, um, then you commit, you're going to live every moment of your life as fully possible, trying to remember that, like, the absolute reality? Is that...
Well, I mean, he says it. So he says, and, you know, what we were just saying before, genjo, is the present becoming the present. I like that. So he says, "It is essential to live with a conviction that you are making history for the next generation. When people hear you talking like that, they think you are only boasting. But actually, you have to have that kind of conviction." But actually you have to have that kind of conviction. There isn't anyone else around who will do it. You have to realize this and then plant your roots deeply." I love how he speaks of it, you know, that this, our 10 minutes of sitting, our half an hour of sitting, our hour of sitting, we're making history for the next generation. I hope that you'll remember that when you're sitting next because it's true. I really believe that it's true. Yes, Norm?
Can you say that again?
That when we are sitting, working away, you know, to, to let go of thought, to open the hand of thought, we are making history for the next generation. It is a life-changing moment, not just for you.
I got it. So I want to, I want to say one thing. As I was reading through the chapter, I was really struggling with a lot of the sentences. And, uh, you know, why did he say it that way? What the heck's going on here? Why does Zen have to like speak in code? And all I wanted to do is stop studying and sit. I thought to myself, you know, this time, I'm struggling with this information. I'm not getting a lot of it. I should just be sitting. I'll get more out of that than working on this. I guess the point I'm, I'm making is with all the conversation, all the explaining and all of this and all of that, sitting gets it all. Sitting just gets it all. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say ideally it does. In, in real life, not quite. That's the thing. It, it's, it's, it's easy to miss things, Norm, even sitting very, very deeply. It's, it's easy to misunderstand what you see when, while you sit. And so that is why we work with a teacher. That is why we do spend, you know, sometimes, you know, these, these books, you know, they're, they're, they're tough going. I agree. You know, some of them can be very dry and some of them can get very abstract. And the reason we spend time with it, you know, trying to understand, trying to put a frame around what doesn't have a frame, to put a label, a category on what cannot be categorized, is just so that we can make use of it when we need it. I think that's the best way that I, that I can say it. Because when you, you know, I've started asking people, you know, who are working on koans, you know, they presented the traditional way, which has to be direct. And I've started to ask them to now give me an example of their daily life or to explain it to me. Because I lived seeing something directly and then not being able to use it in a different situation. It's not an automatic translation. And so I've actually, you, you do, you learn how to do the direct thing, which is like you said, you know, coming from your zazen. But then it's really important to, to be able, in a sense, to explain to yourself what's happening. So, so I guess my, my suggestion to you would be to, to not get discouraged. Just take a little bit at a time. You know, you don't even have to go through the whole chapter. You know, pick a, a little section and just stay with that. Sometimes I, I do that. Because you know, otherwise it's just a whole lot of information. But if you can, if you can say it to yourself, if you can explain it to yourself in very simple terms, then it's much more likely that you'll be able to remember it when something comes up that requires you to use that particular insight. I know he's using language that may be like, well, this has nothing to do with my life, but it does. And that's the work of translation that I'm saying we're trying to do.
Okay, and that's, when I say sitting hands, I'm not suggesting that we don't.
No, I know.
We don't use a teacher or have it, I'm not suggesting any of that.
No, I know. And, and I'm, and I'm lovingly and respectfully saying, I wish it did, but it doesn't.
Okay, I know, I know we're running late, but so the, the two years I spent at the monastery were the happiest two years of my life. I went up there, I guess, like everybody else. I had this and I didn't like this guy and I didn't like that guy. And she disappointed me like that. So I, you know, I was walking around with all this stuff and suffering over it. And I left it all on the mountain. I, when I left there, I was not experiencing any of that. And I don't remember really having a discussion about any book.
We did, of course we did. We did study. But you're right, but you're right, you know, and, and Uchiyama says it, right? That, that, the, the hard work of just letting go, letting go, letting go. I mean, he basically says, you know, the whole problem is, is, is our thoughts. Because they're creating a self that doesn't exist. So, so in that sense, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I mean, that's, that is the bulk of it. And that is why we sit as much as we do in Zen specifically, as opposed to just doing debate and doing other things. There, there is a reason. It's just, I'm just saying that the other, it's, it's important to have the, 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 the cognitive knowledge so that you can understand what's happening so that you can use it better. That's all. It's part of skillful, skillful means. And so just to, you know, so to, to wrap up, because he says it actually very nicely. He says, "You are within me. I'm just facing myself, you know, when I, when I look at you. In other words, you exist within myself and it is to that you that I direct myself." That is Thich Nhat Hanh saying, darling, I am here for you. That's how you can say that and actually mean it. It is to that you that I direct myself. That is what vow is. I can't say it any better.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to know where that was.
Well, I too have the Kindle, so I'm not sure. It's towards the end of the chapter though. It's not the very end, but it's towards the end. I'll, I can, I can look it up and send it to you.
Yeah, I have a question because for, well, with relating to what Norm was saying, this, in Zen, do you label thoughts the way, you know, judging?
No, not traditionally.
That's Theravada.
Yeah.
So there's no effort to, uh, as thoughts arise, to categorize them?
You see the thought, you set it aside, you come back to the breath, to the koan, to awareness. And yeah, let me just leave it there. Yes.
Interesting, because he seemed to be, Uchiyama, on, it's on my book, in my book, book, it's on page 37, but he talks about compare, comparing ourselves, you know, comparing mind, judging mind, uh, you know, fixing mind, those Theravada.
This was in this chapter?
He doesn't use, no, he doesn't use those words. But the word comparing ourselves, we get lost, we lose sight of the reality, getting caught up in the fantasies of the past or in our relationships with others. We end up being dragged around by our comparisons of ourselves with others.
Yeah, and so the instruction is you let all of that go.
Right, but to let it go, you have to know that it's comparing mind.
Zen, I think, would argue that you don't. It's, it's a thought or a series of thoughts and you just, you set it aside and you come back to the object of your meditation. I'm not saying that it's not, that is the most skillful thing or that there's, there's no use in categorizing because I've done it and I think it is helpful in certain instances. It's just that it's not the instruction that we normally receive. It really is, see the thought, set it aside, come back. Regardless, we say the most noble thought, the most deluded thought, it doesn't matter. Set it aside.
Just a quick question, does categor, does, does categorizing, just to follow up, does categorizing create a sensation or an emotion that we should maybe be aware of? Because it feels like anytime I categorize somebody or something and I'm aware of what it creates, it's usually never anything positive of a feeling. Does that ever come into the practice?
I mean, I think it's possible to categorize without emotion. I mean, that's.
Without emotion?
You know, that's an Oriole, that's a, a Daisy, that's a, you know, whatever, table, an oak. I think what you're talking about is judging, comparing and judging. In the moment, there is some sense of hierarchy or judgment, then yes, there usually is, emotion usually negative. Okay, would anybody like to chant? Great, thank you.